This is the public hearing of the committee at a whole regarding Bills Number 170195, 170196, 170197, and Resolution Number 170213. Mr. Stitt, please read the titles of the bills and resolution.
Bill Number 170195, In Order to Adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years 2018 Through 2023 Inclusive; Bill Number 170196, In Order to Adopt a Fiscal 2018 Capital Budget; Bill Number 170197, In Order in Adopting the Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2018; Resolution Number 170213, Resolution Providing for the Approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a Revised Five-Year Financial Plan for the City of Philadelphia Covering Fiscal Years 2018 Through 2022 and Incorporating Proposed Changes with Respect to Fiscal Year 2017, which is to be submitted by the Mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the Authority pursuant to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement, authorized by an ordinance of this council, approved by the Mayor on January 3, 1992, Bill Number 1563-A, by in-between the city and the Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Stitt. Today we continue the public hearing of the committee at a whole to consider the bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal 2018, a capital program, and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal 2018 through fiscal 2023. Today, we will hear testimony from the following city departments: First Judicial District, District Attorney's Office, Law Department, Defender Association, and not going to talk about later on, because we will have public testimony, and that will be a hearing within itself. Mr. Stitt, the first person to testify is...
Honorable Sheila Wood Skipper.
Thank you. Your Honor, please come forth.
Good morning, Council President Clark and members of this remarkable and wonderful city council. As you know, my name is Sheila Wood Skipper, and I am privileged to address you today as Chair of the First Judicial District Administrative Governing Board and President-Judge of the Court of Common Pleas. I am here representing my colleagues on the Administrative Governing Board, who include the Honorable Marcia Nyfield, President-Judge of Municipal Court, the Honorable Jaclyn Allen, Administrative Judge of the Trial Division, the Honorable Margaret Murphy, Administrative Judge of the Family Division, the Honorable Matthew Caraffiello, Administrative Judge of Orphans Court, and the Honorable Gary Glazer, Administrative Judge for the Traffic Division. Also in attendance with me is Mr. Joe Evers, our District Court Administrator, and Kevin Cross, Deputy Court Administrator for Financial Services, here to answer questions from member of council concerning our budget requests. I will note that I have been asked to keep this testimony very brief, and I certainly will accommodate that request and ask that you refer to the detailed written testimony that has been presented to you by the First Judicial District. I will start, however, by just recognizing that the judiciary is an independent branch of government, whose mission is to adjudicate cases according to jurisdiction and to ensure fair, timely, and accessible justice to the citizens and litigants in here in Philadelphia. Our system enables every litigant to receive their day in court, whether through our innovative specialty courts, progressive diversion programs, or our convenient online court access, our multi-faceted reentry programs, and by implementing best practices in family and youth services. These proactive initiatives, coupled with our high level of judicial commitment and productivity, enable the court to meet many societal needs and enhance the lives of the citizens of Philadelphia. In this brief testimony, I will highlight how the judiciary contributes to the budget, how we remain a physically responsible partner in government, and how we invest in our workplace, our clients, our constituents, our justice partners, in our facilities, and in outcomes. These investments are achieved by implementing new initiatives while not seeking additional funds in our budget, creating efficiencies within our justice system, and providing accessible services to our citizens and those in need. Our budget request for fiscal year 2018 is $161,466,092 million, and consists of $111.4 million for the General Fund and $50 million for grants revenue, and is awaiting your approval. In large measure, this $161 million budget request is paid for by the court system itself. In fact, the FJD generates $49 million that is credited to the General Fund from filing fees, $31 million from fines and costs, and $16 million from reimbursement. In addition, the FJD saves the city and its agencies nearly $4.6 million annually by waiving filing fees in the Court of Common Pleas and Municipal Court, as well as $3.2 million in law library fees. Thus, as a consequence, the total request of $161 million in reality is only a request for $55.9 million, which really is less than 1.3% of the overall general budget for the city. I should also remind you that for the last three years, we have not requested any additional funds in our budget, and this budget-neutral request can generate budget savings while we implement new programs and ideas. So in keeping this short, again, I will refer you to the written testimony and just outline for you some of the things that we have been working on or have achieved. For instance, we create better access by having web-based job applications where people can apply online, and we've received over 11,000 applications for that. We still have electronic filing for payments and fees, and also where individuals can status their cases, jury duty, and payment of fines and costs. In terms of new initiatives, we are working towards the creation or the discussion about having day reporting centers as a willingness to an additional initiative, and we're working hopefully with city council to formalize this endeavor, and CJAB has actually developed a subcommittee to work on recommendations on how we should proceed, and also working with city council's Criminal Justice Reform Committee. We also now have access to Wi-Fi in both the Family Court and Criminal Court locations, and are working on achieving that for City Hall. In October, we opened our Elder Justice Resource Center to provide legal assistance to citizens and assist them with services, court information, and education. Our Orphans Court has developed a Guardian Investigator to review and monitor guardian reports and filings. Our Family Court continues to house a juvenile probation evening reporting center, which is a community-based alternative to juvenile confinement, which allows youth to remain in their home and continue to attend their neighborhood schools. Our Municipal Court continues to provide a court-based landlord tenant health program to improve access to justice for low-income and unrepresented tenants, and they're hopeful that we'll be able to expand that. Our Traffic Division is a proponent of electronic citations, which will yield more efficient, expedient, and safer car stops. As you probably know, that in April of this year, in the Scout Center, we instituted a cellphone restriction, and with using the Yonder Pouch, which is a green pouch, I'll have Mr. Evers hold that up for you, which individuals place their phones into the pouch, they're turned off, but they don't have access to entering, texting, taking photographs. This was all done to deter witness intimidation and to make sure that there are less courtroom distractions. We also will be placing in our new civil jury room on the first floor here a mural arts inspirational program, where it will emphasize the importance of jury duty and participation. We've installed 168 cameras in the Scout Center hallways and common areas to promote the cause of justice, deter intimidation, and foster a safe and secure environment for our victims of crime, witnesses, litigants, and employees. We also have equipped each of the courtrooms there with for electronic evidence presentment, and again, this is in an effort to make our cases run more efficiently. I'm sure you've heard quite a bit about the MacArthur Grant and our participation in that, but this is an unparalleled collaboration fueled by CJAB between the city's justice partners and council, resulting in this $3.5 million award to address prison population, create alternatives to cash bail, and enhance diversion and early intervention programs, and also address racial and ethnic disparities throughout our system. There are more details about this initial program, the early review, the early bail review program, which has been very successful in allowing individuals who are on low amounts of bail and no other matters holding them that can't make the bail, and they go through this process early on in the system and they are released. I'll also note that under the MacArthur Initiative, we will be attaining 700 new electronic monitoring systems, which will replace and enhance the current system by allowing cellular technology that will eliminate the need for the individual to have that old-fashioned landline. Additionally, the Mortgage For Closure Program acknowledged the 10,000 homes being saved under the program. We've also developed a Civil Tax Rule Returnable Program to help residential homeowners to alleviate any property tax delinquency and the possible loss of homes through a shared cell. They come together with counselors and the Law Department and come up with agreement to make their taxes current. Additionally, we also have the Civil Tax Equestration Program, which handles petitions to appoint sequesters for commercial properties where tax liens have been filed. In the three and a half years of this Commerce Court's program, the city has obtained over $54 million in back taxes, including more than $17 million in 2016. As indicated, this is just a brief, brief summary and highlight of some of the things that the court system is undertaking. Again, I ask that you read the detailed written testimony, and I'll also note that once our annual report is completed, as we did last year, you will be provided with that as well, which will give you additional information. But in addition to providing the delivery of fair, timely, and accessible justice to Philadelphians, the FJD should be recognized for its contribution to offsetting its costs and generating revenue for other city agencies. As outlined in my testimony, an investment in our courts, judiciary, and staff creates returns that positively impact our justice partners, other city agencies, and our citizens. Thank you for this opportunity to present this brief testimony today on behalf of the judiciary, the Administrative Governing Board, and the employees of the FJD. We respectfully seek this council's consideration and approval of our FY '18 General Fund and Grants Budget Request. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Your Honor. Always makes me feel good when I see a person who grew up in the Fifth Councilmatic District, not too far from where I live. Makes me feel really good, and I want to thank you for your testimony. Had to get that one in, Curtis, you know how it is. Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Actually, one. So recently attended a conference, and we actually had a lot of the meetings in the City Hall in New York, and this is about security of this building. And before you actually got to the building, you had these booths, and in the booth, you had to walk through a metal detector, and I don't know what else they were detecting. And it was serious stuff, police officers there, the whole nine yards, and then when you got to the building, you had to show the ID similar to what we do downstairs, but it was clear that they wanted to make sure that nobody got in that building with a weapon of any sort. And I know that you and I have had some conversations about the lack of security in this building, actually just talked to the sheriff on Monday. What's your perspective on that, about the lack of security in this building, a building where you not only have elected officials, and we do tend to attract some people who don't necessarily like what's going on, but more importantly, we have a lot of courtrooms in this building? Can you give me your perspective?
Certainly. So I start with this. This building is very unique in that it houses all three branches of government: legislative, executive, and judiciary. And as an individual who arrives in this building very early in the morning and leaves late at night, it really is very daunting in terms of the lack of security. We know that this is the people's building, and people have the right to access, but I think in even accessing this building, we really need to take measures to ensure that people who are accessing this building are safe, and that be the residents of this building or even people entering the building. And I do feel very strongly that we need to develop appropriate measures to, while trying to maintain it as a welcoming people's building, that we address the issues of concern to at least all of the tenants here in the building, and I think the public at large, given, I think, the massive amount of incidences that have occurred across this country in terms of courtroom security, knowing that there's someone looking at this, determining that weapons aren't being borne in, or even any other illegal things, I think would go a long way to ensuring more confidence in people entering the building.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to get that on the record, because I think it's time for all of those three branches of government to sit down and let's have a real serious conversation, and then take it beyond our conversation to actually implementing some security measures for this building. I think we're actually the second least-secure municipal building in the country, and that's not a notation that we'd like to have. I don't know if Councilman Jones, I see Councilman Jones is wheels ticking, as the Chair of Public Safety, will make sure that we get on point on that and follow through on that conversation. Just had a couple of quick ones for you. In your five-year plan on page 307, you stated in the five-year plan that pre-trial and case management restructuring is reducing the percentage of incarcerated individuals awaiting trial to reflect national averages. What is the difference in waiting periods between Philadelphia and other municipalities? Are we closer or better?
I think with all the new initiatives that Philadelphia is implementing, we are certainly getting much closer to the national. We have a huge volume of cases in Philadelphia, and what we're working towards is to making sure that we are adjudicating these cases efficiently, that we are looking at the individuals that are being housed in custody, and some of this is under MacArthur, some of these are just under general court practices, to make sure that we are following the mandates of the national state courts in terms of being in the ballpark for that, and I think we're doing a wonderful job and moving closer to being within that national average. As a matter of fact, I think all of our programs in terms of adjudication of cases, both in criminal and civil, are over the 100% mark in terms of meeting those national standards.
And also, again, in your five-year plan, you discuss reducing time that a citizen waits for trial. Research has shown that the inability to post bail and length of time awaiting trial pushes individuals towards plea bargains. Does your department believe that reducing pre-trial times or reducing cash bail will reduce the prison population?
I think that we are finding that out more and more, particularly as we work through MacArthur, and one of the early initiatives that I mentioned is the early bail review process with Judge Nyfield in Municipal Court. We're bringing in individuals, looking at their case. If they don't have any other holes, the bails are being reduced to really reasonable amounts of no bail at all, and with restrictions, though. They have to make sure that they're reporting to pre-trial for orientation and for how that's going to proceed. I was looking to just read you the numbers in terms of that. The 83% of the individuals who came through on the early resolution program for bail were actually, 82.4%, did retain release. 92% of those individuals appeared for their next court date, which is what bail is designed to ensure court appearances. So that's a good sign that people are actually coming even once they're released. 88% of those who were ordered to pre-trial services show up for that pre-trial orientation, and over 43,000 inmate bed days have been saved since the inception of this early review in 2016. The prison population has also reduced tremendously since that. So we are certainly moving in a direction, making sure that bail is really only being used for instances not where people can afford to make bail, but for very serious crimes, where we are looking at the protection of the public.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Now, I want to thank you also for your support given to the Special Committee on Criminal Justice Reform chaired by Councilman Jones, Garrett Bradford, and former Deputy Police Commissioner Bethel. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
And thank you.
All right. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
Your Honor, I think a lot of us have heard from some of the individuals that are serving as court-appointed counsel.
Yes.
And basically on two issues. One, the timeliness of them getting the money that they have earned, and second, as probably a whole lot of other people, they like to get paid more. But I know you've been, something you've been working on, so could you talk about that a little bit, please?
Yeah, so last year, I convened a committee of judges, members of the Administrative Governing Board, private counsel, defense counsel, the managing director's office in the city, to look at this issue, because these individuals really have not had a pay increase since, gosh, 90s, maybe even the 70s in some instance. And so we know that that is primarily the reason why our court appointment list is shrinking tremendously, and we don't have the ability to ensure that individuals get appropriate and proper legal representation. So since that group has been convened, we've come up with some proposals, and so they're in draft form at this point. They have been approved in draft form by the Administrative Government Board of the Court. There is a meeting next week of that big group where this will be presented. Any changes will be made to that, and we are hopeful that we will be able to issue an order raising and changing the guarantee fee system effective July 1 of this year.
Okay. That's make a lot of people happy.
I think so.
And how about the timeliness, and I don't know if that comes under you?
So the timeliness really goes to the managing director's office.
Okay.
But we're hopeful, because we're having this collaborative discussion, that we can encourage and assist in any way to ensure that these payments are made timely, and hopefully within the 30-day mechanism that is prescribed.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for appointing me to the Justice Reform Committee and dealing with public safety. Short of hanging out with my colleagues and learning from them, I believe it's safe to say I've learned more from these professionals in my public service career than any other department, and I'm appreciative of you allowing us in, because what needs to be stated on the record is, you talked about your role as President-Judge, but I would like to lead off with your other role as Chair of CJAB, because a lot of the results, whether it's prison population declines, whether it's diversionary courts, whether it is, there is a system of departments that are working together in an unprecedented manner, and you're seeing the results even before the MacArthur findings implementation Justice Reform Committee recommendations. And I'd like you to touch on that for my colleagues, and how that is being accomplished, through saving of dollars for taxpayers, and also a different type of justice that is being administered that is not necessarily our grandparents' justice. I want you to talk about that for a minute in my round of questions.
Very well. So with CJAB, which is the Criminal Justice Advisory Board, which is a collaboration really from all the major justice partners, that includes the DA, the PD, the city, probation, the prisons, and all of the administrative judges, and basically what it allows us to do is sit around and talk about the issues that impact the criminal justice center system, and how we can all work together to correct, change, modify things, and make them more efficient, and taking into account the impact any change has on any individual agency or a group that's in attendance. I think it's different because it allows that conversation to take place around the table or during the work of the subcommittee. I'm sure all of you know that most of the hard grinding work is done by the subcommittee, and the actual CJAB is reporting out where those decisions and recommendations are made. It allows us to create new programs with the assistance of the partners that will be directly impacted, and that's what has helped with the creation of all of our diversionary programs, all of our reentry programs, all which help, one, in preventing low offenders from being housed in prison, finding alternatives to incarceration, and then making sure we are looking at individuals who are re-entering society, and helping and trying to provide the appropriate services and resources that they need to be beneficial members of society, and to prevent that revolving door of residivism in and out of the prison.
So for those who are watching on television or my colleagues in chamber, the simple notion of all of those justice partners sitting in one room once a month makes all the difference in the world, because what we tend not to understand, the silo maybe of the police department that says we're going to crack down on public disorderly, impacts the prisons, impacts the courts, impacts probation, and it's a secular effect. And so without warning, if you're not in that room when that public policy decision is made, then you're wondering why our prison populations going up, because we made a public policy and another, a change in another department that affects that. And the beauty of it is that when they make those policies, the other partner hears it and can adjust accordingly. And that has resulted in reduction in prison population, reduction in costs, duplications and inefficiencies are cut down. And I just want to say that to watch that, it is almost a government model that we need to do in department clusters. Tell us, give us a sneak preview of what the MacArthur Foundation is going to lead us towards.
I think MacArthur is going to lead us to greater efficiencies in the court, lower prison population, better services for special populations of individuals, particularly mental health, earlier resolution of cases, quicker, more efficient navigating of the justice system, and just a even greater collaboration between the parties involved. So again, as part of CJAB, it made it easier for these parties to come together, and I think the intenseness of the MacArthur process and grant has made this group even closer in terms of how they develop the programming.
Mr. President, so Judge Lerner and Julie, whenever we ask them specific questions like that, now I know where the messaging comes from. They don't give up anything on the tape. So specifically, will we be looking at day reporting centers, which the President has been looking into? Tell me how GPS technology is going to impact that process. And as important, how are we going to retrain staff in the various departments to adjust to these changes? And I'll let that go in the general.
So in terms of the...
Day reporting.
Day reporting. That's really an initiative that's coming out of CJAB, not specifically under MacArthur, and we have convened a subcommittee of CJAB to look at that, to determine what the best processing. I know there's a feasibility study that has been approved to determine what the best way to approach that is. I think everybody's on board with that. I think it's something that's been a long time coming. I know there've been discussions over that over the years, and, but I think we're in a place now with all the collaboration that we will probably be able to get that done. In terms of the monitors, so now we're trying to move up to the 21st century, so we know most people now no longer have landlines. So with the electronic monitors, you need to have a landline. With the new technology, you can use it through a cellphone, so that will enable more individuals to be placed on electronic monitoring, because they don't have to worry about the landline, which sometimes is an impediment for individuals to do that. And what was your third point? I'm sorry.
I'm going to hold the third point until my next round, so that my colleagues can ask their questions and...
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes... Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Judge Wissinger. Couple of things. One, I want to commend First Judicial District on a number of their initiatives over the years. Of course, the Mortgage Forclosure Diversionary Program, as well as initiative that I know Judge Lord Doosan has been very strongly promoting regarding human trafficking.
Yes.
As well as the Elder Resource Center as the Vice Chair, the Council Committee on Aging. I know I brought that issue up in the last year's budget testimony, and I was glad to be there when you did the ribbon cutting in the fall. Like Councilman Greenly, I'm also concerned about the court-appointed counsel and the delay, the number of attorneys that provide that vital service, the delay in their payment. And I believe it was in 2012 when the court-appointed counsel payment process was moved from First Judicial District to the Managing Director's Office. Do you have any perspective? I know you say you're working on some initiatives. Do you believe it should be moved back to the First Judicial District?
I do not.
Okay.
I think that should remain a function of the city and the Managing Director's Office. I think we should work collaboratively to ensure that the processing is done efficiently and timely, and we're also working together on developing the new fee schedule. And like I've indicated, I'm hopeful that there's going to be an order on that as of July 1.
Also, I've been working with a number of different agencies regarding expungement work, and there's been an increase in number of expungements. And I know there's props, I believe a prop of about 200 expungements that are being processed per week. Has there been any discussion in reference to increase in number of employees in the motion unit? I believe it's about six employees now. With the increased number of expungements, has there been any conversation in that regard?
Well, we're always evaluating the need for additional employees or for redirecting employees depending on what the needs are. And I can tell you that each time there's one of these very impressive and well-attended expungement clinics, we do work with the parties who are involved in that to ensure that the processing of those petitions can run as smoothly as possible, given the numbers of people involved in the process that has to be done from a legal standpoint. So, we do try to keep tabs on that, and we'll work certainly in a diligent effort to make sure that they are done in an efficient manner.
One of the things I've been having a semi-regularly conference call with Mike Lee's group, as well as Philadelphia Bar, with Chancellor Gross, as well as, we just recently learned that Public Defender's Office do daily expungements, and some of the other organizations like The Bachelors as well, in trying to pull the information together and a better resourced use. The Philadelphia Bar, they come up with a Get Expunged website, and so we're trying to have all expungement information on that one website so you don't have this situation where people hear about an expungement clinic and they run thinking that's the only one available when there's multiple expungement activities available. Hopefully, there was someone from First Judicial District that we can reach out to to get involved in that process to kind of streamline information and make it easier for people to access. I had a question in reference to bail, and there's been a lot of conversations, especially during this current election season, with the various candidates for district attorney. And I wanted to get some better perspective on the bail process. It's been some time since I was in the DA's office, and some of that information has started to escape my mental capacity. But when a person, when they provide the resources for bail and the actual peer, what happens to the money that's put up for bail?
Once the case is resolved, and they can petition to have that bail returned.
Okay.
So, there's a process for doing that.
Right. And so then, how is the information provided to individuals regarding the ability to have the bail money returned through the petitioning process?
I think that once, when the bail is posted, they're given the information there then about when and how the bail can or will be returned. In certain instances, it may require, there are sometimes issues involving whether the bail is to be turned over to counsel for some reason, and that may require a court order.
Right.
So, it depends on the circumstance, but the general practice is told to them at the time the bail was posted.
And do you have any information regarding how many people are successful in receiving bail funds returned back to them?
I don't have that information with me today, but we can certainly gather that and make sure we get it to you.
Okay. Another question has come up that's been an issue both of national and also local regarding sanctuary cities. My understanding, I know Councilwoman Sanchez and Councilwoman Ginn were recently in a meeting with ICE officials a little while ago, and so there's been some recent information that I learned that through the probation officers in the First Judicial District that there's been some, I don't want to use the word coordination, but I want to get a better perspective on what's been the interaction through probation officers and ICE.
So, over the years, there's always been some relationship between probation and ICE, particularly on certain charges. Remember, probation is for individuals who've been convicted. So, on individuals who've been convicted of certain charges that come under the ICE regulations and statute, there may be coordination about those individuals. The probation department does not actively seek out ICE, but if there is an official warrant from ICE, just like any other official warrant or legal authority, they're required to follow the rules and regulations regarding that.
Thank you, Council President. I have some additional questions. I'll come back in the next...
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President, and good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
I have a couple. I just wanted to make sure, this is a nice presentation, by the way, that you gave us.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I understand. Is your request this year from the general funds 111 million?
That is correct.
Okay. And what was the request? Was this for fiscal year '17, not '18?
This is for fiscal year '18.
All right. Would this chart you handed out was for '17?
Just state your name for the record.
Kevin Cross, Deputy Court Administrator.
Is the chart for '17?
No, it's for fiscal year '18.
Okay. Well, in the chart, it says the general funds 110 million, and it's, your testimony's 111 million. I'm just wondering, it's a million dollars, but I'm just wondering which one's right.
Our request is for 111 million dollars.
Okay. And then, let me just go down the numbers for a minute. You're filing fees, fines, and costs at 31 million? Is that what you collected?
Yes, that's correct.
And if I recall, last year, we had a conversation about some of the fees haven't been changed for 30 years.
Yes, we have had some discussion about that, yes.
And so, when we figured out the rate of inflation from those fees was 144%, if I recall from last year. And so, any idea of what, if we were to change those fees, what the impact might be on this budget?
We are in the process of implementing a new fee bill, and I've been working with the legislature to impose a new fee bill, and that is hopefully going to be introduced soon. We do not know what the new fees are going to be, and so we don't, at this time, know what the impact is going to be on the city's general fund, but we expect that there could be an increase in the civil and criminal fees.
Any idea of the 31 million, how much that represents?
It could represent 10 to 15 percent.
Total?
Yes.
And the other fees have all been up to date in the last two, three years?
And then, we'll be able to look at some of our programmatic fees and make adjustments there also.
Would you say most of these fees haven't been changed in the last three years?
The last civil increase we had was in 2006.
2006?
2006 for our civil fees, yes. So, the fees have not been increased for a while.
So, can I ask you for a recommendation to look at all of the fees and make a recommendation of where you can increase them so we can decrease our contribution? Because according to the state of Pennsylvania, the courts are supposed to be funded by the state, aren't they?
That's correct.
And they're not doing their job. That's costing us $55 million. We should sue them for that, by the way. I'm sure we, it's ridiculous that we're paying for their costs. So, my goal is to see that this gets to zero, we don't have to fund the courts. But if we have fees that we've been not changing for 30 years, that's our problem. We need to fix that.
And we're working to achieve that.
So, can you give us a schedule of what we can anticipate in the increase of fees of everything from 1980s to 2006 and bring us up to 2017 and see what kind of money we're talking about?
Yes, we can provide that. We'll work on that.
If this 31 million, if it's just even half of that, which is 15 or 16, at 144 percent rate of inflation, that's another 20, 22 million dollars.
We can't guarantee that we can raise our fees that much, but we can look at them individually and see what's the best.
But I will say this, I know for a fact, I don't think there's any housing that's still sold at 1980s rates. So, I don't know why we're delivering services at those rates. It just doesn't make sense. All right, I'll come back to you on the second round. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President, and welcome, Madam President.
Thank you.
Great job with your testimony, and, you know, people fail to realize, you know, that, you know, when you talk about being on the front lines every single day, you know, our First Judicial District is the front lines, you know, especially for those who need proper justice and fairness in our city. And I don't mean to say that to be, you know, just as a standard, you know, compliment. I mean, you really do, there's a lot that goes into it. I've always amazed of the technical data, all right, that you and the administration puts out. I think it's fascinating, and I think we can learn something from the courts on how you use your data and use it in your program-based budgeting and your systems as a whole. It's funny, I have to giggle a little bit, Councilman Dom's reference to, you know, we should sue. All right, I think, I think we've already done that, and here we are, nobody wants to touch it.
Right, right.
And everything seems to be like, okay, just, you know, let's just keep operating as we are and refine everything. I got a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
You know, we talk about, and, you know, my hat goes off to my colleague, Councilman Jones, in his passion and commitment to criminal justice reform and helping it, and you see some of the results in your testimony, you know, new initiatives, day reporting, CJAB questions. You know, we have heard over the past several years over the MacArthur Grant. All right, so my few questions on regards to that is, when is that, when's that going to expire? Like, when are we going to, we received just a few million dollars for some initiatives and review of the criminal justice system and processes. When is that, when do you anticipate that to expire?
So, it's a three-year grant, and we just are completing year one, so we have two additional years.
Okay. Well, that's wonderful. All right, so three. And CJAB, I mean, you're basically in collaboration anyway in implementing a lot of these suggestions, I think, that have been best practices across the country. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm also happy to hear that court-appointed attorney fees are, and which I am aware of, have been reviewed and recommendations coming forward, you know, for the new fiscal year. Same thing with conflict counsel. I mean, I think it's all, it's all one and the same when you're dealing with the fees. So, I think that, that's great for the citizens in the city of Philadelphia.
I certainly agree. It's one of those initiatives that we know is long overdue, and hopefully, it will have great impact on the representation for our indigent individuals.
That's awesome. And, you know, I'm sure that's a part of the bigger picture of the evaluation and review that you've been taking place over the last several years, especially since you have been in charge as President Judge.
Thank you.
How is, how do we evaluate whether a hearing would allow for remote video conferencing?
So, video conferencing can be used in several different ways. We, if an individual is at the prisons on State Road, there are video, what we call crash court hearings, where that's all done by video, and that's usually to determine bail or next steps. We can do video hearing for violation hearings for defendants who may be in state custody in another state facility, and so we ask them for their consent to do that and pull them out, and that saves the cost of the sheriff going to the state facility and bringing them in. It's more efficient, it saves time in court. The lawyers are able to use video conferencing to interview. We have set up stations in the Stout Center for them to bring up their clients, and particularly if there's a plea offer that perhaps will get the individual out of custody or move his case forward in another way, they can have that discussion as opposed to waiting weeks and weeks or months to either send a letter or get up to a facility that could be hours and hours away. So, it allows the system to work much more efficiently. There have been even times and occasions where video conferencing has been used during the course of a trial, where a witness may be in custody, they can't get that person down in a timely fashion, and that witness can be connected to the video, that testimony taken even in front of a jury.
I think, well, it's probably safer, all right, to some extent in certain situations as you see fit, but you really can't cost the save on transportation
Correct.
over time. Is there other areas that the courts may be thinking about utilizing video conferencing? And I know this is probably a little too early for it, but, I mean, would the courts consider, or the justice system at large, consider some of the, I guess, the police officers using video conferencing instead of logging up, you know, we're blogging up the CJC?
So, that's probably a bigger discussion because, you know, there's always the right to confrontation, and I think the good thing about all the collaboration, that as we come up with new ideas about how to use video conferencing, we have all the parties around the table to discuss pros and cons or how we can make that work. So, we're always open to new uses for video conferencing, but we have to get the agreement of the justice partners as well. And so, that's always a work in progress.
That is a tremendous amount of large, I mean, you'd need every partner involved in the criminal justice system to even have a conversation about that.
Correct.
You know, through our Comcast franchise agreement, the, they are in the process of building an INET system, that's Enterprise Network for Government Agencies. I mean, you can have enterprise-speed, high fiber, you know, high-speed fiber cable going out to all our municipal buildings, police districts, you know, throughout the city of Philadelphia. So, one line next year, we will have that kind of instant speed and predictable and, you know, reliable type of technology at every municipal building in our city. Just, you know, when we're planning ahead, I know my time is up, but I'm going to leave the President Judge with a question on the GPS monitoring systems.
Yes.
One, I know we increased it last year, just, you know, generally, how's it going? How's, is, you know, how much, you know, can we quantify the savings in that when it comes to our, not just our court costs, but our, you know, our time that we have on in our system, you know, some of these, you know, some of our population or correctional system?
So, any improvement in increasing our numbers with the electronic monitors and the GPS in particular, it's always going to improve our system, our ability to stay connected with the individuals that we are sort of watching and want to make sure that they're in appropriate places at appropriate times. So, certainly, that has been a plus, and with the addition of the 700 that we will be doing under MacArthur, that's only going to improve that system. I'm trying to see, so, for instance, with the electronic monitoring, the savings is 3,005, 3.5 million dollars for the juvenile delinquent GPS monitoring, the savings has been 6.6 million. So, it certainly saves money, time, is efficient, and it allows individuals to do things that they may not ordinarily be able to do.
So, there's almost an immediate return of our investments to...
While, while monitoring and, you know, ensuring that the transition of somebody who was either incarcerated for a temporary timeframe into our society.
Correct.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Your Honor, can we touch on briefly a couple of things that you mentioned
Certainly.
in your testimony? The Juvenile Evening Center, I believe it was, is one. And then, I have a question. Some years back, we dissolved the clerk or quarter sessions and kind of merged it into court operations. Can you give us an update on how that has resulted by way of efficiencies?
Very well. So, starting with the Juvenile Evening Reporting Center, what that allows, it furthers admission of the juvenile, of the family court by looking at what's in the best interest of the child and being able to engage that child and move it forward. By having the juvenile reporting, evening reporting center, it allows that individual not to be held in placement... it allows that individual not to be held in placement or in custody, but to get back into the community, to be able to be there with family or with other supports are available, but also to be able to get to school, to be, to stay in the school in their neighborhood, hopefully to move forward and for that to have a positive impact while their case is being adjudicated through the system. So they're not being held, but they're being able to be, be out in the community doing positive things.
How many young people have gone through that process?
So that, there have been 84 gone, who have gone through the process and in 2016 reported a 91% overall success rate, meaning they're not getting back in trouble.
So, these, all of these initiatives are designed for two impacts. One, to increase efficiencies and reduce costs, but also for the benefit of the taxpayer and all, so the accused. And so, as we measure these things, how do you, as an administrator, determine when we want to increase this program because it meets those goals or whether we are going to, you know, maybe not do that so much because the, we, as, as Councilman Don talks about, how much does good actually cost? So how do you, what's your matrix and evaluation?
So, I just wanted to add one point, don't lose track that the other purpose of that is to ensure appearance in court. And so if you're using, utilizing these monitors or GPSs or a day reporting, a evening reporting center to see that if by providing these other opportunities, the individual will appear in court, but, and does appear in court, which is what this 91% success rate is telling us, that tells us this is a beneficial program because now we're saving the cost of incarceration or housing an individual, we're also giving them the opportunity to take advantage of supportive services that may be available on the outside and we're moving this individual for it. You know, I mean, people who could, caught up in the criminal justice system doesn't have to mean that their life has ended. But we also want to provide them with opportunities to be successful as they, as they move out of this arena and back into society. And that's how we measure success.
So if 90, if 80-plus young people went through it, how many went through the system in general? And how'd you get to that 80? And then how do you know how many others should go through it versus shouldn't?
Okay. So I'll probably have that number and I'll probably have to flip through to find it, but generally, you look at certain factors to determine who is appropriate for this type of placement. And that may be the nature of the charges, like whether they had charges in the past, whether they appeared for court in the past. So you look at family factors. So there are a number of factors that you use to determine whether or not this individual is appropriate for this type of supervision. Because we know that everyone can do this, whether or not there's a home where this can be done, where they have a place to live. And a lot of us take that for granted, but there are so many, children and adults, who are homeless and don't have a place to live, and that would create more of a difficulty for getting them on this type of monitoring, which is why having additional resources in terms of housing and placements always help with this. I'll continue to look for that if I don't have that number.
So, in our next round, and I'm going to pass the mic, in my next round, can we talk about the clerk or court sessions and that evolution of administration? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. This is Philly Tech Week, by the way, we're in it right now. And I noticed in your testimony that you roughly have many creating efficiencies within the criminal justice system, and the total of these efficiencies is roughly 14 million dollars. And a lot of it was accomplished through technology. And a lot of it was passed on to other departments. But what I've been seeing going through these budget hearings is that, you know, technology's tremendous and we use technology, we're supposed to save money by using technology. And here I'm seeing 14 million, and I realize not all of that is your department, it's other departments, but how much of this 14 million is attributed to your department?
We can't attribute any of that savings to our department. We have efficiencies that we've created in our department through electronic monitoring, I mean, through electronic filings where we've been able to reduce staff over time and through attritions and we've, where we've had departments that had 70 employees and may now have 30 or 40 employees because we don't have the walk-up traffic and we don't have the filings at the counter where all of our filings are done electronically. So we've, we've been able to save through efficiencies within our court system that way.
So I'm looking at, you know, most, most of the time you'd say, there's 14 million dollar savings here. Well, show us the money. Where, like, where is that? And what departments are we seeing those savings? I have yet to hear anyone come in and say, we're saving X amount of dollars because we use technology, we don't need as much as we needed last year because of technology. Everyone comes in here, including the prison department, that's having a reduction of, Councilman Jones, what? 34%? And is asking for more money. And I'm, I'm just trying to figure out why are we not going in the other direction when we're using technology? And so my question to you is, can you identify for us what departments in the city are actually receiving these savings and how much they're getting? Because I want to check on their, on their budgets to see if that savings has been put into the budget.
Okay.
Will you be able to submit that to the Council President?
Yes.
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for testimony. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
It's a good thing when there are not that many members, it's a bad thing when there are not that many questions, you can't take, take the break. Can we talk about, in context of bail reform and early bail review, how the clerk or court sessions in collecting some of that internal process, how, is it more efficient, less efficient? How are we doing?
Well, we like to think that we're always getting more efficient in whatever we do. So the process is one that's determined as, as we change how we're looking at bail, then processes are put in place to make sure that we accommodate the ability to deal with that. And we rely heavily on our court administrators and our Office of Judicial Records to ensure that, one, that the information is timely and accurately reflected and that the individuals who are working to ensure that the bail is being collected is done appropriately and properly.
So how much bail went through our system last year? What are those actual dollars? And then, how, how many esconded and bail was violated? And, and so, so how does it, so let's dig down and see how, I, I remember in the hearings about the clerk or court sessions that there was some figure at the tune of 500, I think it was million, was it million? That we were exposed? And now how, how, today, how is it?
So according to the information we have from 2016, there was 33.1 million dollars collected for bail. The number of esconders, I don't think I, I don't have that, but I can give that to you, but that was the amount of money that was collected.
And we get a, what percentage is administrative fee associated with bail? Is it about, if I recall, it's about 27%? Is that?
I don't want to quote you a wrong number, so let me make sure of that so that we get that.
Because there is processing fees.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I get that.
Absolutely.
But I, I think we, as we start to look at bail reform, those numbers become important, those statistics of people who esconced become significant in our reevaluation of how bail impacts people showing up and if it does. So, so early heads up, and I'm sure to MacArthur, people already know that it's a secret society of folk who know, but, but at some point, as the discussion becomes more public, we, we, those questions will be asked. And so the numbers matter in the sense when we're talking about 31 million dollars, when we're talking about some percentage of that being held by the city. So, so if we can, we can dig down and get that. So, by way of ankle monitors, it's my understanding that in the budget, we're looking at an additional 700?
Correct.
What is your guesstimate based on the average day of people on State Road, how it's going to further reduce the census population up there? What's a guesstimate?
Well, we certainly, that will certainly allow more individuals to be released on the GPS monitoring and so that will certainly decrease the prison population. In terms of numbers?
It's a guesstimate, I would imagine. And I, those are, those are things as we, and I'm sure you have that, but I can only think that if some percentage, and we go back and forth for percentages, we stay away from that now, but let's say pre-trial folk represent about 30% of the population, I think it's closer, and if 30% of that population is eligible, and I know there are a number of factors involved in that, public safety and others, but if we can do that, I, I predict that the needle will move further down. 700 monitors with a average day of six months or so has to put a dent in that, in that 6,500 that are currently.
Absolutely. And we will make sure we get those numbers to you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. One last question I wanted to ask. In your testimony, you budgeted for 2258 employees in fiscal year 17, page five of the budget. Yet your increment run as of 1214 was 2333. So I'm just wondering why we had to hire 75 more employees?
Two areas. One area is we have a full complement of judicial staff in our, in our current budget. We had judicial vacancies in the prior year and when we have, when we have a full complement of judicial staff, we have additional staff that are supporting those judges. And we've also hired additional probation officers in the Court of Common Police Trial Division.
Roughly, what are the average salaries of those people?
The judicial staff are probably around 38,000 to 40,000 and the probation officers are about 37,000 to 43,000, somewhere in that range.
And you're familiar with the fringe benefit costs of the employees?
Roughly, yes.
What do you think the fringe benefit cost is?
37 to 40%. 37 to 42% for new hires.
I think when you add in all the fringe benefit, including the pensions, they're part of the city's program, it's 87.7 right now, going to 92 in the five-year plan. So I just wanted to put that in your mind because when you hire somebody for 40,000, it's really not 40. And you add in the 87 and it, that's not even adding in the city's overhead estimate of 37%. That 40 becomes 100,000 real quick. So I just want you to be aware of, it's not 40 grand we're hiring, it's 100,000 we're hiring. Anyway, thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson. You want to go? Well, okay, because he, he came back. He's been here.
I've been here.
That's fine. I'll make it easy for me. Makes it easy for me. Chair recognizes Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. I have just a question, Judge Woodskipper, in reference to, what is the process of placements and reassignments for judges within the FJD? How does that process?
So that process is determined by coordination between all of the administrative judges on the court and what the needs of that particular division is at the time. And so then judges are allocated based on need and coordination between those bodies of individuals.
Is there any consideration reference to seniority, prior legal experience?
Not necessarily. I think it's, the greater emphasis is what the need of the court is. There may be some thought given to, has this person had certain experience in certain area where there is a need and that might equate to a person being transferred to another division because there's a greater need there. But it really is dependent upon what the need of, of that particular division.
And when you say need, what goes into that assessment of need?
I'm sorry, say that again.
What goes into the assessment of need?
The thought process of the administrative judge and the ability to coordinate and get buy-in and, I guess, agreement from the other administrative judges. Because all of the divisions has to be staffed with an adequate number of judges. So if one division needs an additional two and another one needs an additional one, and it goes back and forth as to who's getting what particular judge, and they're considering all the factors in terms of what the needs of that particular division is and how a particular judge may best fit into that program.
And if, and if certain divisions are having uptick in certain type of cases or, or caseload or slowdown, those, that goes into the analysis as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President.
Good morning.
How are you, President Judge?
I'm fine, yourself.
Always good to see you.
I agree.
And before I start, just always want to commend you for your service to the city of Philadelphia.
And thank you, and thank you as well for your service.
Thank you very much. I had a couple of questions regarding, under Family Court, specifically dealing with the issue of juveniles and restitution fines and fees. And just want to, for you to briefly give me an idea of the process in which the court administers fines and fees and restitutions for juveniles, how it's paid back, and also, if we could talk dollar amount overall, the amount that juveniles are charged on fines, due fines, fees and restitutions. Obviously, most recently, we struck an agreement with Department of Human Services in the state to abolish charging parents' child support for their children being in the juvenile judicial system. And I was always under the impression that this was really administered under the judges that come from Family Court. And so can you just clarify that process for me and then just give me an overview of how that system works under fines, fees and restitutions?
Okay. So that does come under the jurisdiction, the Family Court, Family Court Division, and each judge imposes individually the fees upon a particular case. As I, the information I have is that for 2016, the total collection for restitution for juvenile victims in court fees totaled $287,000. How much of that has been collected? I don't have that information, or if you want a more specific breakdown, I'd have to get that for you as well.
Please.
And so I can get that information back from you from the administrative judge.
Okay. And also, can you also find out for me, in the event that the family or the juvenile isn't able to pay the fines, fees and restitutions, and what's the recourse from the First Judicial District standpoint? Like, does a person stay on probation? Does it go into the credit union and pack the credit score? Because what we want to do is, one, first and foremost, make sure that Philadelphia never turn into a Ferguson where we're balancing the backs of our budget on the backs of those who are poor that can't pay fines, fees and restitutions. And I'll be finding alternative ways to rehabilitate our young people as opposed to bargaining their families down in fines, fees and restitutions.
Yeah, I can find out more details about that, but I can tell you generally, each case is probably looked at separately and probably the major thing is the ability to pay. And so.
And one last question. So the head of the juvenile court system, is, is they here today?
No.
No? Okay. So, using the tradition, Kevin Dockley used to come and give us an overview, and so I guess I'll do a follow-up, where I'll have my own separate hearing to delve into the issue, because I thought today we'll have a chance to at least ask some of those questions, but I'll do a follow-up in a separate hearing to just specifically focus on that issue. Thank you very much, President Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Oh, thank you very much, Council President.
Good morning.
Good morning, President Judge. I just had a question, and I don't know the answer to this, but I understand that in New York, if you get a traffic violation or parking ticket, that you could request to dispute that with an online hearing, and that you don't have to go to court. And I wonder if that is something that we could do here in Philadelphia? Are we looking at something like that?
I think we're always looking at new technology and how to resolve those kinds of issues. We have moved towards being able to look at what your traffic citations are and get a lot of different information on an online system. I don't think we've yet moved to that, but I certainly will have that discussion with the trial division administrative judge.
Thank you. I could only speak on my own behalf, but I would fully support funding something like that. Just, people get these tickets all the time, and it costs so much money just to go to court. Take an entire day, if they got four kids, like my wife, they're not going, they're just paying the $79. And, and I just think if people could do it online, and, and there may be some fee involved in that, I just think that would be such a welcome thing for our city.
Very well. I will take that back as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green. No? Okay, no problem. All right, I gotta take advantage of a clear board. I want to thank you very much for your testimony today, and thank you again for your service.
Very well. Thank you for your time, it's been a pleasure as usual. Thank you to everyone.